Welcome to the February City Commission Meeting. And here we go. Right, we'll start with our pledges to the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored and dedicated flag, pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Alrighty, we'll do a roll call. Okay, Commissioner Heinemeier.
Here.
Commissioner Ignaschek.
Here.
Mayor Nolan.
Here.
We have a quarter of. So we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Um, under announcement, I have in my stack of things that I have this evening, I do have a check report, there's a couple of items of interest on here. I'm sorry, I'm looking my finger. My finger, my fingers are dry though, but they're clamping right now. Um, alright, so, um, items of interest since the seventeenth, uh, let's see, blah, blah, blah. We had, uh, outlays for the trail drive. And speaking of trail drive, Jessica did a fabulous video, have y'all seen the video?
Drone video.
I didn't even know about it until some trail riders told me about it.
Then I saw it, I guess if I liked it, I saw it.
Yes, I didn't know about it until some trail drivers told me about it and they were so excited about that video. Yes, it is great, I want to know how I can get a copy of it, so we can like.
Yeah, let's put it on the website.
Five dollars, five dollars in a envelope?
Hey Jessica, can you put it on the website?
No, I love that video, she did, you know, with her drone and everything and our, you know.
Yes, I remember that.
With the drone and, and so, yeah, I got a lot of great feedback from the trail drivers. There was some that showed up, you know.
Yeah, I saw it's been shared like twenty something times and, uh, well, I don't know. Yes, I made a cool video.
Yeah, you did make a very great video.
You're good at that, you're good at that.
And we, we also got a lot of great feedback from the trail riders on the, on the breakfast. And I had people there saying, oh, I've been waiting for this ever since last year, so we got a lot of good feedback. They really like stopping over in Kingsbury, they like the trail ride breakfast, then, and then Jessica did that awesome video. I think they're gonna, you know, use that also, so. Um, the outlay was, you know, not that much. Uh, that's with the couple of Walmart thing and Taco Cabana. Uh, the Selco survey for seven hundred, that was for the, uh, survey for seventy-five seventy-one, uh, Kingsbury Road. Uh, they, I had to request the invoice, they just never got back me on an invoice. So I was like, you know, I don't think we've paid these people. And, uh, so I had to request the invoicing and, uh, they got that in. Uh, the Wixcom, the six fourteen eighty-eight, that is for a, the two-year, uh, for the website. And I, I have the invoice number on here, so you have access to the whole budget spreadsheet. So I thought, well, I'll go ahead and get the invoice numbers on here. Um, so that's for the Kingsbury org website and the plan, uh, for two years. And then, of course, uh, uh, it was the first ever withdrawal from Texas class, uh, for the one twenty-five. Uh, I've been contributing, or we've been contributing for years.
Yeah.
And, uh, so it was our first ever withdrawal, it went very smoothly. Um, and I just pulled out a hundred and twenty-five to make sure any kind of, of.
Fees.
Yeah, everything was covered. Uh, we had a withdrawal for the cashier's check for one oh one two seventy-six seventy-four, which was for the purchase of seventy-five seventy-one Kingsbury Road. Um.
Yeah.
Uh, our, uh, this is one thing that was interesting, the Texas controller, uh, our sales tax for December. Uh, the one in December comes in with December, the, uh, quarterly payers and the yearly payers. So it was December fourth quarter and yearly, it's never this big, seven thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars. We beat out like three other towns in the county, uh, with that. So I don't know where that.
Kingsbury Museum credit.
Well, you remember we got like a thirty thousand dollar one at one point because there was someone that had not been paying in that should have been. And, uh, so I'm not sure what this is.
Or maybe that's storage across the road.
I don't, no, no storage, you don't have to pay sales tax. Um, so I.
Somebody making beautiful quilts that sell for millions.
I don't know, I don't know.
Anyway, fantastic.
Uh, I mean, maybe if they sell the contents, maybe, I don't know, I don't know. Um, however, I did put in a request through the, uh, Secretary of State, uh, an open records request to find out more about who's pay. We used to get a, a, a report, a paper report, which they don't do anymore, uh, of who paid in. What I don't have, what we never had was who paid in what amount.
Yeah.
And so I went through the open records, of course, the, I did, I thought, well, I'll do that on Monday. Well, of course, they're, they're closed today. Um, so, but I was able to online put in, uh, the request, uh, through their open records, uh, for that. Just curiosity, I'm not sure where that came, because I'm always afraid they're gonna yank it back out. They're gonna find some kind of accounting error.
I'm curious, it was fueling our.
Yeah.
Our co- our city budget.
Yeah.
Fuel this, what this economy is, where this economy is coming from.
Yeah, because there was, there was not a jump.
Amazon, because the sales tax where the sales tax.
Right, if you're, if you're in the city, if you're in the city limits, yeah, and you purchase something online, you pay sales tax to the city of Kingsbury, but.
My deliveries seem like next.
Yeah, but none of the other municipalities in Guadalupe County had a jump like that. So I'm not sure what went on there, and it always makes me nervous because I always think they're gonna come in and yank it back out. Um.
But we don't spend it as fast as we get it, so.
No, we don't. We're very frugal.
We'll probably have it.
Yeah. Um, and then, uh, just to, uh, any of the leftover from the withdrawal and then the cashier's check, I put twenty-five thousand, uh, back into Texas class, because that is where we are making our interest income, uh, for there. Uh, and then on the, uh, the survey and for the cashier's check, um, I, in the account, uh, budget and the actuals, it's E D, it says E D F miscellaneous, that's the, uh, Economic Development Fund. Actually, it, fund is probably an incorrect word because we don't have a separate account for that. But that is where we have, over here, E D F. E D F, Economic De- Development Fund. So any monies that we have, uh, unspent from the previous budget cycle, that's the line item that I put that in. So, uh, we certainly didn't have anything budgeted for, for this, um, in our last budget cycle. So, uh, that is where the majority of that money, uh, lies. So that's where I, I, uh, identified as the budget item that we took that monies from.
Question.
Yes, sir.
It's, it's not, Economic Development Fund is not what it is, so.
It's not a, I, I think fund, you know, I could be wrong, but I think fund.
What do you call it, Economic Development? Do that, how you would label that?
Well, it's not a, it's, I, from what I understand, a fund, uh, is that it's got, it's actually like a separate account. This is not a separate account.
Well, explain, one more time, explain to me what this money is.
So, uh, any of the monies that, because we have to have a balanced budget, we can't spend any more than our revenues and we don't make a profit. So any money that we roll over in our accounts from September thirtieth to October first is, yeah, it has to be in the budget somewhere.
Okay. So it's just, it's just to balance.
It, it is, it's correct, correct.
And will, and it'll sit there for?
Until we, we need it, until, until it rolls over into the next budget.
Alright.
Um, so there is, um, a.
Well, what I'm, what I'm thinking, because of that Texas.
T G A.
Yeah, Governmental Accountability.
Association.
Uh, they're, uh, I think it's confusing to call it something that it's not. Yeah, I know, I know, but if somebody was to pull this up and go, okay, well, where'd that come from and why is it there, what is that for? You know, and all it does is a little more confusion to the mess.
Mm-hmm.
So.
This is the line for the purchase of seventy-five seventy-one Kingsbury Road?
Yes, the cashier's check, and then also I took the survey monies out of the same account, E D F.
Yeah.
So it's just, it's just a line item in our budget.
Mm-hmm.
So it's not like a separate account I'm taking the money out of or anything like that, so.
Well, Frank, what would you suggest it be named after, just miscellaneous?
I have no idea. No, I don't know.
We do have like a miscellaneous.
It's, uh, I mean, it's, it's leftover money that we didn't spend that we're gonna put back.
Surplus, well.
It's, it's not a surplus.
Yeah, it's not really.
It should be going into like an emergency fund or a, some kind of fund that we can access when we need it.
I'm trying to recall what the county calls, because our county has had for years, even the state has. And it's not the select fund, and they use the word fund, it's the, and I, and sorry, I'm not tracking right now.
Yeah.
Rainy day account, only it doesn't have to be a separate account, it's just a, well, I don't know.
I, I mean. Yeah. Yeah, and I may be, I may, it may not be a big thing to call it a fund.
Well, I don't mind calling it a fund, it's just, it just. If it's kind of clear what it is and, you know.
It's, it's essentially the rollover.
Yeah. I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't look like we're trying to hide anything.
No, we're not trying, it's actually in the budget.
But, yeah.
It's out there plain, plain as day.
Well, just, well, let it, let it sit right there and stew for a while.
Yeah.
Well, I, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Did, I mean, when we got the opportunity to purchase the City Hall property, uh, I think that was after we passed a budget in, was it October one or September?
Uh, we passed it like in August.
Or we approved a budget.
Yeah, and it was, our fiscal year goes from October first to September thirtieth.
Should, uh, did, did we have a line item for purchase assets or purchase real estate?
No, no, and we certainly, we certainly can go back and do a budget adjustment of some sort, which probably would.
To reflect what actually happened.
Yeah.
And, and then put all three of those under, that you have under E D F, put them back under, uh, real property acquisition.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah, and when I was going through this, I, that's one thing, I was thinking, well, that probably would have been, you know, something to, to, to do, to do some kind of budget adjustment of some sort. Because, I mean, it's still coming out of the same place for the same thing, it's just a matter of, in our budget, we didn't have a line item for this kind of thing. So in a budget adjustment, we would add a line item and then, uh, and then, uh, identify the monies for that and then what we spent. So that's something we can. That's, that's why I brought it up, because.
Yeah.
Somebody's gotta say something.
Yeah, yeah. We've never had to do that before, so it's kind of, uh, uncharted territory for us.
And we have utilities and so on and then.
And then, and, and then if you make that adjustment and you go back and, uh, change our budget, which we can do retroactively, uh, then when we come up and do it again in, uh, September, this coming September, uh, you're gonna, that's gonna be a line item, and then you just look at it and decide, is we, do we anticipate, uh, any, uh, activity in that account? Should we budget something to that, uh, so you can retroact.
And, and when we do a budget adjustment, we should probably also estimate, uh, utilities, uh, insurance, uh, water, you know, kind of thing, also.
Yes, utilities, yes.
So. Uh, alright, uh, let's see, da, 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 and then to put the Texas class back. And I ended up taking it out of just the general account, and I didn't take, I didn't move any monies out of the grant sub-account. Um, because I wouldn't, I didn't really want to just close it out, just move everything over and close it out yet. So it's all in the same, you know, it's just the same bucket. Um, also, uh, it doesn't show on here yet because banks were closed, but there was a deposit from, uh, uh, checks from G V C, uh, franchise, franchise fees for, uh, uh, Q four last year from, uh, G V C. That's what two of those, for some reason, they, they do it in two, two checks now. So, uh, it was like, I forget how much, three fifty or something, three sixty, something, four sixties. Alright, um, there is that, okay. Uh, one other thing, announcement, I was contacted, I talked to Jessica about this today. I was contacted by, uh, gentleman, uh, Richard Risen, Risen. Um, he is with the, uh, Rissy, Rissy. He is with the, uh, S A R, the Sons of the American Re- Revolution, kind of like D R T, Daughters of the Republic of Texas. There's the S A R and D A R, yeah. And he had contacted me a couple of weeks ago, um, about proclaiming Saturday, Washington's birthday as George Washington Day. Uh, uh, we started this project with cities only, the cities of New Braunfels and San Marcos have been regular participants for around ten years. The city of Seguin and Guadalupe County have participated, we found a chapter member living in Guadalupe County, uh, to contact them, we have this year. The city of Wimberly has participated for several years, as have the cities of Dripping Springs, Kyle and Butte. Occasionally, the cities of Garn Ridge, Marion and Sibelo have participated. And we have a chapter member living in Blanco County, Blanco County, and the cities of Blanco and Johnson City participated. Uh, since we started asking counties to issue proclamations, Comal County, Hayes County have been regular participants as indicated above. Guadalupe County has been a sometime participant. We, we regularly ask Caldwell County and the city of Lockhart, but I don't recall they're ever participating. This is the first time in memory that we will ask the cities of Luling and Staples, and I believe that he has also said that Staples did actually permit. And so there's a proclamation, I wasn't, there's nothing in here that relates to anything as far as modern politics. This is just a proclamation on George Washington Day. So whereas the United States of America was established following the War of Revolution from seventeen seventy-six to seventeen eighty-three, a war won through the brilliant and courageous leadership of George Washington, revered father of, father of our nation. And whereas George Washington, who lived from seventeen thirty-two to seventeen ninety-nine, mobilized the Continental Army and led the American colonies against the most powerful country in the world, finally defeating the British at the famous Battle of Yorktown, Virginia. And whereas the revered founder of our nation resisted the efforts of many supporters to make himself a king or dictator, instead, instead using his influence and power to support the creation and adoption of the Constitution of the United States. And whereas George Washington was elected as the first president of the United States, serving two terms of office from seventeen eighty-nine to seventeen ninety-seven, and through his devotion, wisdom and vision, became the exemplar of distinguished leadership for all future, future presidents. And whereas the William Hightower chapter of the Sons of the American Revolution and the local D A R chapter, if participating, wishes to encourage all citizens to recognize the epical contributions of George Washington to our nation by celebrating his birth on Saturday, February twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. Now therefore, I Shirley Nolan, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Kingsbury, do hereby proclaim February twenty-second, twenty twenty-five as President George Washington Day. And call upon all citizens to recognize and honor the brilliance, courage and vision of the father of our nation and the relevance of his life to the preservation of our democracy in today's complex world. Yeah, yeah, and, yeah, that thing about a dictator, whatever, yeah, he was asked to, yeah, to be a, a dictator, and he resisted that. So in testimony thereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the city of Kingsbury this seventeenth day of February twenty twenty-five. And they wanted to do like a little photo op and stuff, and I talked to them today, but they are, he is, uh, they want to do that a little later because of personal, uh, surgery going on, so, um, uh, we'll go ahead and this is the official proclamation by the city of Kingsbury that George Washington's birthday will be hereby President George Washington Day.
Very nice.
Great. Alright, this is other stuff, this is other stuff, this is other stuff. Um, oh, G V, oh, I did make a note, they come out to about four sixty, the G V E C franchise checks. Um, I did, regarding, uh, seventy-five seventy-one Kingsbury Road, um, I did contact G V E C regarding the meters and everything, and all they need is the meter number, um, and they can handle that in about fifteen minutes. Crystal Clear was closed today for President's Day, and, uh, that last week was a, a mess, so I only got to around this today on President's Day, so. Uh, and I did put a call into T M L regarding, uh, the insurance, uh, on this. So they should be able to get back with me tomorrow. That I'll go over. Well, uh, and then updated, uh, we were required to update the Texas Department of Emergency Management Form one forty-seven, which is, which kind of fits into our discussion on emergency management. Um, and it's a form that Guadalupe County, uh, requires, uh, on a regular basis, I'm not sure if it's yearly, but it's, uh, basically, do we have like a separate emergency manager and, and contact information for that? So I got that form out to them. Alright, I think that's it. Um, any other announcements? Announcements, alright, it wasn't up. Uh, public comments or discussion? Oh.
She took a phone call.
Oh, okay, I'm not sure, uh, what she was wanting to cover today.
I don't know if she had anything specific, I, I went over and was just friendly chatting with her at the store and mentions that we were having a meeting tonight, and she said, oh, maybe I'll come.
Okay.
So for the purpose of what you just did, you could indicate who it was. Meanwhile, uh, yeah, I contacted G V C about moving, pulling down the line in the property so the meter, and at my cost, and that's supposed to be done, that's what the note on the back of that bill was.
Oh, okay.
That's why it's, I'd like to have a little bit, but that way you have the meter numbers, even though I already texted them to Frank, I figured, you know, you have all the meter numbers and everything there, but the notice is, yes, they did call me, Matthew.
You do have the meter numbers?
On the bills, the bills are, aren't they?
Oh, does it actually, is that a count number or is that a meter number?
Both.
Okay, alright.
On, on the bills, you have the meter numbers.
Uh-huh.
And the security light, which I would like to see continued, but do I want to pay for that or that? Because that's way down over the corner of Kingsbury Road, Prairie Road.
Awesome. So is, okay, so this is, this is, so this one actually has the one seventy-five currently wrote address, cool.
Uh, security, security light, it's on our, it's gonna be on our electric bill, but it, it overhangs the intersection.
Yes, it's there. Well, it. If you look at the elec, I did bring the electric, I didn't review to see what I brought to you, I brought you the, the night, the electric bills and the crystal clear.
Yes, you do have, yes, you do have a separate lights bill on here.
Yeah, there's three, yeah, there's the two surfaces.
Oh, it's a separate bill?
It's a, yeah, so he's been.
Which, I mean, it really, it serves that intersection, it serves the people.
Yeah, one bill does three separate items on one bill.
Yeah, so we should be paying for it, okay, alright, so.
Okay.
Christine, did you have any public comments you wanted to make? We're in public comments.
Okay.
Okay, just checking.
Thank you.
Alright, yeah, so thank you, I didn't, I didn't even think about that. That, um, security light, so, yeah, it looks like it's the same cost as the lights downtown, so sixteen.
And it pretty much serves a pretty good purpose on that corner.
I think it does, I think it does. Alright, any further public comments?
Because it is, I didn't know if G V C would contact you or not, uh, through the discussion I said, taking down that line so you no longer have, so the city, the property no longer has the utility easement running into the middle of the property.
Yeah, yeah.
And I also contacted, uh, G V T C because right now the line is at one seventy-five, but it comes off the middle instead of the corner, so they haven't got back to me which, what, what they're gonna do with.
Okay.
Again, I'd like to move that, or so that is.
Yeah, we've had this discussion about, yeah, phone lines and phone numbers, and certainly, I think you want to keep your, your phone. I don't know, I mean.
But that's a matter of them move, you know, whether I have to have the service moved in order to get the easement to the center, it'd still be the same address. There's a box on, that's, I don't know how the, uh, box in the middle of the property, the middle of the property line.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but that's where the phone line currently comes over.
Okay.
And just like taking out the power line, take out that line.
Yeah.
And now it's a corner.
Yeah, okay.
Which there's a box at the corner, that's why I don't understand that.
Well, you know, actually, it's agenda number five on here, discuss and consider what next steps, so maybe we can talk about this.
Yeah, that's true, that's true. Yes, good, good point.
I didn't know where it followed, I'm sorry, so.
Yeah.
I'm not the public, I'm just a.
Um, review of public documents, area residents needs help with E T J. I did get a question regarding someone that is, uh, you know, had the outer loop of Seguin going through their property, as many people do coming up twenty-four thirty-eight. And I did verify that they are released from the E T J of, of Seguin. So, uh, they had not been delivered that paperwork, however, I did print out the ordinance and, and so we'll get that, get that to them. Um, item number four, old business, this is the consent agenda item, uh, which is, uh, includes the approval of the January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five regular commission meeting minutes. Any, uh, reason that that agenda item should be moved to the regular agenda? Alright, so those minutes will stand approved. Um, item number five, discuss and consider real estate acquisition and next steps, there we go. Uh, I have had, just, I have had a number of people, uh, because there, we had an event in Kingsbury Hall, and I had a number of people extremely interested in helping out.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so I said, well, we're probably going to rely a lot on, on volunteers and, and do kind of like the, uh, aerodrome, you know, Volunteer World Day.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, so, yeah, we've got a lot of people interested in, in helping out there.
So maybe we need to start having like monthly meetings and, and maybe in.
Yeah. Well, I think when we were talking about, uh, this early on, I believe according to the home inspection, uh, the first thing is the.
Leveling.
Leveling.
Which we can't do, I mean.
Right, exactly, so I think the first thing would be the leveling and, and roof.
I would like, yeah, the foundation leveled out, and we'll see what's still standing, and what breaks or what cracks or what moves.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then when that's. And then when that's addressed, then the roof and a new roof on, and then it's free game, y'all.
Yeah, I think so too.
But I think in the meanwhile, you know, we can start like drawing up plans, we have sketchup and stuff, I mean, we can scan rooms and figure out what needs to be done.
I wouldn't ask for a whole lot of, well, I guess you ask whoever wants to show up, but to whip up a lot of enthusiasm and it's gonna be a few months, I'm pretty sure before we can actually start.
Yeah, I think so.
You know, nailing and painting and.
Besides just getting um service, you know, transferred over, um I think it, leveling is, is step one.
So the idea is to hire a company or something that.
Yes, and I actually talked to some people about that, that were at the event in Kingsbury Hall. And uh several people, and uh, yeah, there, it's.
So what'd they say?
Pier, you know, for pier and beam, it's not really that diff, and not like a slab, you know, leveling a slab. It's pier and beam, it's, it's doable, we just have to, to contract with a company to.
So we also need to figure out what, what companies.
Do on their own.
I mean legally, don't we have to have like three companies that we look at and get bids from?
Yes. Yeah, if you're gonna do uh you know, contracting with vendors to obtain construction services, that does require that you, you have to, uh, I think there's even a requirement and I'll, I'll update that let you know what it is, but I think there is even a requirement that we publish in a newspaper of general circulation the fact that we want bids so that everybody knows and uh, and then we need to have at least three bids and uh I, I think that it's done in a sealed bid, it has to be done in a, a sealed bid. Issue an RFP and, and publish it and we request a proposal and then they, and say we want that by such and such a date and it's gonna be opened and reviewed by the city commission at two P M on such and such a date. And uh so they have a deadline to get it there and then we have to review it and we can, there's different ways that you can score it, uh you can just use like for instance, you can give scores to local businesses, Guadalupe County or Kingsbury and give them more points than experience it has to be than, than people that have done that kind of work before. So anyway, I'll, I'll get you a checklist on what those proposals have to look like and then that's how we have to choose.
So we gotta maybe, yeah, we used to do it now and, and if we wanna get moving on it, we might want to uh even have a, a, if we have to have a meeting outside of the monthly, I guess we can just plan for that.
I was gonna ask, is this, when we review the bids, does it have to be in an open meeting?
Yes, I, I think, I, I think that it does, yes.
Alright, and do we have to have a parameters set out like the scoring?
Yes, and in fact, I, you know, the parameters are set out on your request for proposal. Uh, uh so when you publish it and say, then you're gonna say, we're gonna make a decision based on the following parameters and those things are going to count, so we invite you to do. Now, so that would apply to anything that's gonna, we're gonna spend city money on. Uh, I've been thinking about it, I've also talked to some people that, just local uh folks that were interested in just working as a volunteer. I don't think any of that would apply to volunteer days. And then we would just be making a decision on how much materials we buy and I don't think you have to go through, it, it's just purchasing materials, so it's not quite the same. But when we, if we go to a foundation contractor uh to, to do that work, then we're going to need a sealed bid and it's all gonna have to be transparent and uh give everybody a chance to open it up and then we have to go in there and grade everything and then make a decision.
Does anybody have any idea of what somebody had been through? I should have asked the people that were telling me that.
It didn't, well, no, the, what, the bid that comes in will be the, the price we're looking, prices we're looking at, no idea, no idea.
Um, so I have another question about all of these, uh this list of, of um, you know, what we want, like local people get a higher, yeah, we need to come up with that ASAP, so is that something we could do over the message board or I mean, we're gonna try to attempt to do it tonight?
I could, I.
For volunteers?
The list of grading.
What business cards are available at the store on the business card bulletin board as well?
Yeah, yeah, and I know someone that went through it, which is the the uh gentleman that you purchased your car through, they did it over to Miss Esther Nooney's old house.
So that's um Robert and Katie.
I can't.
I can't pronounce her last name.
I know.
I'm sorry, Robert and Katie.
I'm sorry, Robert and Katie.
Was Alison down at Katie's house?
I don't know, that, that's the only one I know of that was done recently and looks great.
Well, we gotta just, I guess, spread the word and see if we get any RFPs back and
Yeah, well, we can contact.
People down promptly too.
Yeah, we can contact and see.
I'm gonna need assistance or crash course on how we do this grading and setting up our you know, asking for our bid.
Let, let me, let me pull up the, the local government code. What, what do you call it, procurement, this is a procurement statute and I'll get that statute.
And we get that information, we can start, we can work on that on.
Yeah, I mean, well, I just wrote, I wrote three things down, local, price and quality, I mean.
Experience.
Experience.
Yeah, you mi, mentioned that, the other thing is, I think you can have volunteers and if they contact.
You're not gonna have volunteers leveling the building though.
No, not leveling.
Not for leveling though.
I don't want, no, we're paying them to do the job, they do the job, they're not gonna.
Yeah, volunteers are for interior work, because there's plenty of people who do a little bit of electric or a little bit of drywall or a little bit of plumbing.
Some contractors use local volunteers, sometimes for hire, sometimes as a volunteer because of where it's going. And in government, that counts.
They can hire if they want.
But that's a, that's a. And the government did this stuff, am I anywhere close to knowing about it?
So that's, that's our first order of business is to get that ball rolling and find out what we need to do and make sure we do it right and get that.
We did an RFP process for the grant stuff.
We did an RFP for the banking also. So we've gone through the process a couple of times, there's back on like some of the old notices, legal notices on the website if they're still there, you know, we have the RFP.
We got one foot in the spirit.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll keep my eye on the message board, I promise, I promise.
Alison should be aware of the volunteerism thing because it's a, a nonprofit.
Yeah, yeah, but not for foundations, I mean volunteering is, I don't know.
As far as choosing a contractor, a contractor that will take in, it, it's just one of the points on the RFP. And judging the contractor that you are there in, and that you'd have to mention it or you can't use it.
I wouldn't wanna mention it, because I'd expect a contractor show up with all his help.
The society.
So, uh, yeah, so besides the, the leveling, we'll get the electric, you know, the, the water, get all of that, we can do that prior to leveling and then we can, and then at the same time, we can start this.
You mean getting the utilities hooked up or whatever?
Getting them transferred over.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, the house is livable right now.
Yeah, absolutely.
But we want it to be that way for a hundred years more.
Well, according to the inspection, uh there's some things that you don't wanna go ahead and do until it, there is some leveling, you know, so. So I think we kind of quickly, in our vast experience, we, we have, a lot of us in here have a lot of experience, you know, doing, yeah, doing this kinda stuff, so yeah.
We already mentioned the uh getting in touch with your insurer, you have the city's insurer. While I did get a uh rental agreement, I questioned if it would be possible to pay a umbrella, the umbrella part of the city's policy rather than having a personal policy. The rental umbrellas.
I don't understand the question.
Insurance companies, because of property, you can have an umbrella which covers anybody on it, including or if any use, any on the property, but for the umbrella part, there's an additional fee. So if that fee would be.
It's, it's an additional policy.
It's a small upgrade.
It's an upgrade.
Upgrade charge for, to cover, like his situation, uh but it would just be attached to our policy.
Yeah, I don't need to look into that because I did, but if that was, you know, it's a question that I would ask if, you know, they'll all look into and if that would be better to have than, because they're gonna, it, be realistic. We already said it in other places, you go for the deep pockets, I'm not the deep pockets. But I do have the policy, but I could, it could be done the other way as, on an umbrella.
We'll see what our policy looks like.
Yeah, I'll see what.
Thank you, thank you, that's what I'm.
Um, there's a comment on Facebook from Katie Syzdek and she laughs and says, no one can pronounce our last name. Ten K to fourteen K for leveling, our house was eleven inches out of level and next door was three inches out of le, level, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
I do start with a N, so I'm.
How do you spell it?
S Y Z D E K.
Sydick.
Syzdek. Don't ask me.
Give us a call or speak, speaker name.
So theirs was eleven, eleven inches out of
One was.
Out of level, one of them was eleven, I have no idea. Yeah, ten to fourteen.
Ten to fourteen, okay, this is a starting point.
I have no idea how much Zeidler's paid, because that's been a few years time.
Oh, Zslav's?
Zeidler, is how I know, the, the blue house.
I just was wondering ballpark, kind of what they were, what they had paid, 'cause I know that they, they had had that done. Alright, so I think we know what our next steps are.
Butcher of a last name.
Yeah. Um, on to item number six, discuss and consider emergency planning and resources, this is, has Alison's name on it.
Um, it does, but I noticed you had some stuff in your mail. Um, yes, well, um, I did reach, I texted David, but he didn't get back to me, but I know my, this is something Myron has harped on for a long time. And maybe this is what we do first, you know, we have no emergency plan if something happens, um so I, I'm starting to work on it and, yeah, looks like you have some stuff too.
Yes, so there's four to five steps, you know, in disaster, well, first being prevention. Mitigation, preparedness, response and recovery. And I made kind of a list of, just of some of the things that we could potentially encounter, I mean, certainly there are things like tsunamis and earthquakes, although I did feel
Uh, there was an earthquake in San Antonio recently.
I felt it at my house, not that, the one last year, I felt it at my house, but. Yeah, so, uh, I mean, it's something that's real, I mean, certainly wildfires, we know how, we know how that can go, we have some low level flooding, we don't have to worry about, you know, levees or anything. We, but we do have some low water crossings that can, uh, yeah, yeah. I get landlocked, you know, when, when it does, uh tornado and severe storms. As we all know, severe storms, i- if you have microbursts or, or horizontal, what do they call them? Straight line winds, they can do more damage than a tornado. Um, extreme cold and power failures, extreme heat and power failures. And then severe drought was one that was listed, and I thought, well, you know, that really is kind of a disaster, because if there is prolonged drought and the wells go dry and people are trying to, you know, water stock and, or themselves, you know, that.
More reason to have rainwater collection in City Hall and everywhere else.
Um, and then there's, so that is kind of uh your mother nature uh caused. Then there's things like cyber attacks, that can be a, a disaster. Um, widespread power failures, whether it could be through cyber attacks or some kind of infrastructure failure, widespread cellular failure and widespread internet failures, since we rely on internet so much, um.
I think all of those are quite possible.
Yeah, they are quite possible. And then, uh, just a physical, large scale accidents on the highway, so if there's some kind of pilot. I mean, the other day, we did have, what was, what did we have going on and there was a, one semi honked at the tanker truck that pulled in front of him at the intersection and didn't stop.
Yeah, all the time, right there, it, it's crazy.
Yeah, it was, it was very, very scary, I was about to pull out the phone and.
People think it's a four-way and it's not, they try to stop at the. Eighteen wheeler flying through.
And it was a tanker truck, so, yeah, so large scale accidents on the highway, large scale accidents on the railroad, you know, if there was something, yeah, happening.
We've had, we've had eighteen wheelers with big tractors on them, get stuck on the.
Get stuck on the tracks, yeah. And then uh chemical spills, spills, chemicals spills on the highway and then chemicals spills from the railroad. You know, a chlorine truck overturned and that's, you know, that would be a, a huge disaster, so um essentially we don't have a, a ton of necessary or, or the infrastructure for handling, you know, uh we don't have the people to handle if there's some kind of uh power failure, you know, here. What, for a small, yeah, for a small municipality, a lot of what this entails is having the uh quick access to the people that can help.
Communication.
Right, and, and this uh phone chain, so if, you know, if tornado strikes my house, you know who'd call, you know, if I'm, uh, and uh, you know, if there was like chlorine uh tanker on the railroad, you know, blasts us all out of the store, you know, that you know who to call. And so.
Or out of the house.
Yeah, so, uh, and then like I've said before, like when we had some kind of events uh, uh that, you know, there are um, well, there's like the, what they call the COW, which is a cellular on wheels, so if there's an infrastructure failure, that there is cellular on wheels.
We should all have the list of numbers.
Yeah, exactly, so a lot of this is, we can kind of identify the things that we can be sort of prepared for, but for almost all of these, it's like knowing who to call. Knowing who to, that has the resources to, to a, uh, tackle something like wildfires or tackle something like, uh.
But there's also, I mean, we, we, I think we do need to come up with some, some kind of like, if the cell phone service is out, we meet at City Hall. I mean, uh, if, I mean, for now, I guess we all meet here, but we'll meet at City Hall because hopefully we'll be able to get that place made into a, a heating and cooling room in case of emergencies, um.
But I think we can identify a plan for, for things like that, exactly, and the communication.
Communication points, communication and, and like that started, well, start anywhere you want to, but eventually it's like everybody that lives out here needs to know who to call.
Yes.
Yeah, we need to come up with a list that we can send to people.
We don't want everybody calling one person at Guadalupe County. Inundated, canyon, uh, but, you know, who to call, where to go, what to do, I mean.
Exactly, that's.
All we can offer is help, you know.
Much sooner, I mean, I think we should get a landline in at the, do they still make landlines? So I think we should get one at City Hall, also, you know, just so that people can call in, if cell service goes down, there's a place to call. And they know, and we can be there stationed to tell people.
Service is down, then you call for a landline, you call to the landline, there's no cell phone to call.
And we'll go get Johnny Harvest pigeons, which are probably. And, uh, we'll go get Johnny Harvest pigeons, which are probably still.
Yeah.
It's all right, yeah.
So, yeah, that, uh, just first step was kind of identifying. Exactly what you were talking about, like, uh, our chain of, of communication there and then. Just, I wanted to just kind of identify, these are the things that we potentially could face and we just need, for this kind of thing. Here's who to contact, here's the, the list of people to contact for this.
So do you, do you have knowledge of these numbers or a way to find them?
No. No.
Okay, so, yeah, I guess that's the research, who to call.
Yes. All right, so it was just a, a first kind of step into, uh, seeing what we can do and mostly what we can do is. Contact the correct people that can get us assistance the fastest.
And somewhere on there put Margaret Taylor, cause she'll put the word out.
Yeah, Margaret. Well, I think at some point here too, we need to work with, uh, the fire department. Because certainly they are very adept at first responding, first responders and, and tackling those kinds, a lot of those kind of things, so.
And they're local, right?
And they're local.
They're right here, they're close.
And so.
Well, we need the sheriff's numbers probably, and they'll, they'll be able to tell us exactly.
Yeah, FEMA, you know, Guadalupe County, the, Guadalupe County Emergency Management, FEMA, Fire Department.
There's emergency management through Guadalupe County.
There's, there's a number of, of, uh, entities that we can, uh, put on our list to call and then, you know, also, um. Uh, through, you know, and there's things like identifying the people that are, uh, at highest risk, you know, that's another, another thing to consider. Okay, so we'll continue with that and we'll get, um, unless you want to. Take on.
Oh, I mean, I, I'm a little lost, so I think it's gonna take all of us to figure out all these numbers.
Yeah.
Um, I will reach out to the fire department, um, and see if they have something that's ready to go.
Yeah.
From, you know, the governing forces.
Yeah.
Um, also wondering if we should, uh, yeah, just kind of make a message board thing.
Yeah.
We can all work on it.
Yeah.
Uh, but if you.
I think we can lock, we can lock something down, we can lock down, okay, here's what.
Yeah.
Yeah, for.
And it'd be great to just have a list of numbers and then we can pass it on to people, we can do a mailer or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
We see if you have a place, uh, information place to keep that to.
Case of emergency.
For free or for Maggie.
Does Patrick Pender have a written plan for Guadalupe County?
Yes, yes.
And so.
Oh, what is that?
My start, I just copying that.
Yeah, the Guadalupe County Department of Emergency Management.
Where do we bid in, where do we bid in with this plan or their plan?
Yeah, yeah. Um. Yes, very much so, um, and they, did I not mention that, that would be on my list?
Yes.
To calling, um, Patrick Pender on that, um, for resources if, if maybe.
Who's Patrick Pender?
He's, uh, Guadalupe County Department of Emergency Management Director, yeah.
Emergency Management Coordinator.
Okay.
Tune to your local radio station, I hate to put in a plug for him, but, uh, you'll get a lot of those names and you'll get how to contact them and their position.
Yeah.
K to the ED fifteen AM stadium.
And then Holton, Holton, Holton is the emergency assistant. So we'll definitely keep, we need to definitely keep this on our list and then we'll get it knocked out.
Eight fifteen AM.
Fifteen AM.
Yeah, I think, uh.
I don't know when I've been on AM.
Yeah.
And have a, a plan that we can, that we can, uh, go to, to reference quickly.
Trading posters still on, people calling to sell things, that's new, every day, but in the morning, it's news.
Item. Item number seven, discuss and consider Texas Government Accountability Association checklist.
This is Jessica.
It, it has Frank's name on it, but I think it's more you, isn't it, Jessica?
Uh, well, I mean.
No.
Uh, I guess I thought that y'all were gonna go over it and come back to me with, uh, your notes and concerns.
We're good, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, my notes and concerns were was like, uh, I thought, I can't remember the man's name.
The contact is really Anthony.
But he was more or less, most of the stuff I saw that you brought up to him, or y'all exchanged issues of, he was gonna look into and get back with you.
Yeah.
And I watched their February third meeting, they have, they broadcast theirs too.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, our name was in there, but not, we were, we were close, we were close to being in compliance with their. Um, transparency and ethics policies, the way they felt, that's what they said, that's what he said.
Okay.
He expected within a few weeks, we'll probably be just fine.
Yeah.
How many members did they pick up or you couldn't tell from watching?
I, I, not, I didn't, I don't know, they're working on it, they're working with members, whether they have any more or not under.
And I did, I did update the officials with the date of next, um, election, the next.
Yeah.
Term, term expires and Jessica had a organization chart, which I liked.
That's. That's number eight.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
There you go, okay, good.
So government accountability.
So besides that stuff, what else we had?
So, I mean, was there something you thought that y'all were really at odds on, the one thing or?
Well, I mean, um, I actually, I have a meeting set up with him for tomorrow, we were supposed to meet last week, um. And I think that I had talked with some of y'all about maybe I should not have that meeting until after this meeting to get more feedback from y'all.
Mm-hmm, alright.
But, um, but he ended up, uh, canceling on me, so.
Okay.
So it got moved to Tuesday and, uh, um, I mean, I guess last meeting.
It's a really big spreadsheet.
It's a really big spreadsheet.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
It borrowed all the lines to get it all the words in, you know, and I, I know I read out all of it, but like I said, nothing jumped out at me except.
Yeah, I mean, um.
It sounded like you were dealing with him pretty good.
Yeah, I guess, um, there were some things that I brought up last meeting that y'all seemed pretty turned off by at the time.
Yeah.
It was so late when we got to that topic last meeting that I was just like, ooh, I, I don't know, you know.
Yeah.
The one thing, the one thing that did change last meeting, uh, surely changed the, uh, check report with.
Uh, yeah.
Right.
Which.
And there's a few other things that he wanted that were impractical, or, oh, the audit, the audit, it's abundantly expensive, so that's a problem.
Yeah, and then Jessica's posting them also.
Yes, the audit was a big issue.
Right, and that was something that he was supposed to, to get back to us about, um, I guess.
Yeah, so he had. Cause we can't ask the taxpayers to pay for something same.
We, we're not.
Yeah.
Well, one thing I mentioned last meeting, uh, was that they want a vote to go into executive session and y'all were pretty irritated by that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh.
I don't, I mean, if it's on the agenda, I'm not sure why we would vote on.
We've already agreed.
It seems dumb.
Yeah, if it, if it was objectionable to anybody here, no matter who put it on the agenda.
It just seems like an unnecessary step.
If it came up, if somebody thought it wasn't feasible or viable or needed, eh, they would, we would speak up, why are we gonna, but we know why.
Well, and I think that's kind of the general kind of issue with their, um, spreadsheet and whatever is that. Is that they, you know, everything seems to be written for a city much larger than us.
Yeah.
It is.
And so, you know, it's like the way our meetings are, it's so conversational and, you know, a lot of these cities, it's like, or a lot of cities.
We, you only have, we're the fifty percent of the cities.
You have to be called on to speak, you know, and, and e- each agenda item is really very much one person's thing, you know, and like.
Yes. Locked.
Mm-hmm.
So we, we just operate a lot differently than, than the cities that it feels like this is kind of modeled after, you know, um. So, I'm not really sure, you know, I could just kind of tell them that tomorrow, that, you know.
You got a meeting with them tomorrow?
Yeah, I have a Zoom meeting, well, we were supposed to meet, um, last, last week and then he had a, a family situation.
I thought you said he canceled.
Oh.
Last week he canceled.
And, uh, rescheduled with me to tomorrow, which I thought was fine, cause I was kind of waiting for more feedback.
What time is your meeting?
Eleven.
Late.
Let me see. Are you interested in coming to a Zoom meeting tomorrow?
Uh, I, maybe I can, I don't know, but I was gonna look back at their, uh, their February meeting, cause they went to an executive session and I don't remember.
Eleven.
I wasn't really paying a whole lot of attention, but I'm gonna go look and see if they had a vote to go to an executive session then, before they did.
Mm.
I was curious, we should refer to our.
Yeah.
I mean, I, cause I don't think it was on their, I don't know if it's on their agenda or not.
Well, you know, last, last meeting that we had, I'm, I'm the one that raised a couple of concerns when you first brought it up.
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, Jessica and, uh, when I, and particularly about saying that we should have a vote to go into executive session and I just didn't understand. Uh, like, it, it just didn't make any sense because the statute tells us there's only, there's only three or four things that anybody can do under executive session.
It's already on the agenda.
Yeah.
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 So it's a matter of law, but, so I was concerned that they were trying to build in layers of unnecessary. But when I looked at the spreadsheet, uh, it's, uh, you know, he's got. Four A, all meetings of the city council as well as boards and commissions of the city with, and I can't, I can't access all of the language. For some reason, I can't read it all, but, uh, B is all meetings involving a majority of the city council shall be live streamed and video recorded, we do that. Uh, C, the city council shall be permitted to meet in a closed executive session to discuss certain, uh, and then it, it ends.
Yeah, it's the.
Uh, it's a, it's a kind of a uns, I don't know what he means by those points, but then the D, four D was. The city council shall be permitted to meet in closed executive session to discuss certain sensitive or otherwise confidential information solely as required. Under Texas state law, and then the member action that Anthony put on there was limit closed executive session items to only those. That actually require a closed session, such as personnel matters, for which the employee has not elected an, an open session. Real property, security, economic development negotiations, prospective gifts or updates and direction on legal proceedings, so.
But that's the laid out under a group of meetings, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's what, that's what the law says we can do and there's, uh, so no reason, but I don't see that.
Yes.
So. Yeah.
They didn't put in this list that we are to have an election to, or a vote to go into executive session.
Yeah.
So I didn't have a problem, I just made the comment, here, we do that, uh, but, so I don't know why.
I don't know, was there a line where you had a response to him or a question for him of that particular subject?
Oh, well, she, yeah, when, when, uh, Kingsbury questions, and I think, uh, Jessica did apply for, for, uh, address of most of these. Where four A, all meetings of the city council as well as boards and commissions of the city, and that is to go, uh. And then, and his comment was ensure that the policy is followed by all areas of the city. You had a question, I think, would this apply to N, and then it cuts off on my copy.
Hmm.
Uh, but when it was all live streamed and record all meetings, you said, I need to add video links too, and I'm not sure what the rest of that comment was.
Well, I wonder why it was displaying so crummy for you, I, uh, I didn't.
I think, I think he's, I think he enlarges line, just like, uh, cells.
Yeah.
The, uh, cell.
Yeah, which is.
Yeah, probably it's, um, so, and then when he said the city council shall be permitted to meet in a closed executive session to discuss certain. Your comment was, uh, under Kingsbury questions, so even if an executive session, well, uh, I don't know what else was finished up there. But the most important thing that I noted was on four D where you're permitted to meet in closed executive session to discuss things that are required under Texas state law for. Executive session, you just made the comment, done, or at least that's my copy, says, done, and so, and I wrote next to it, that's what we do. And so we follow the law, the law is what he says in four D, so, but there is nothing that I can see about an election or a vote to do it. So I didn't.
Okay, so four C, the city council shall be permitted to meet in closed executive session, discuss certain sensitive, otherwise confidential, blah, blah. One, listed on the agenda of the regular meeting, um, we do that. Two, during that regular meeting of the city council, um, approved by a majority vote of the city council to have such individual matter. Considered during a later closed executive session. Um, so, I think that it is in there, this thing about the vote, but it's just not displaying, right?
Okay. Okay.
Well, if it, if it comes back around, it's not necessary, I mean, follow the meetings act.
Right.
And we, we post an agenda for the executive session in advance, we post it when we do our, the agenda for our regular meeting. We know it's coming and we just recess and go into executive session.
Yeah.
And we close executive session and reopen our standards, regular session, and that's, there's no reason. Unless they have some underlying knowledge that it's really important to have a on-air vote to go into executive, we've already decided it, we.
Yeah, and it's on the agenda, which is posted, I think that's enough.
Yeah.
It's on the agenda, yeah. No one's surprised.
Yeah.
And we follow.
Well, I'll tell, you know, I did, I questioned him on it when, when we first talked about it.
Yeah. Yeah.
And he was, you know, he said, I mean, I think that I kind of confused everyone last meeting because I, I came up with that. Story about Lockhart and then doing a vote in an executive session out of my own head, you know, he, he didn't, that wasn't him, that was me. But, uh, but, so he wasn't thinking we were going into executive sessions and voting on things or something, but, um.
No, and he pointed directly.
But it has happened in history, which is why it's feared, I guess.
I mean, you know, it.
Yes. And also again, as you said, larger city, you have more councilor, if only one calls and they all go into it without voting on it, that would be an issue.
Yeah, okay, what I, what I took, unless there's something that stands out in your mind, uh, on this spreadsheet of issues he might have had with what we're doing or. We have vice versa, what they, on their meeting, what they seem to be most concerned about was the conflict of interest documents. And I know I saw it's been addressed, adding a line to our agenda minutes and video, you got the video link in there. And they're talking, they said, you had, somebody, I guess you talked about adding that conflict of interest document line and that same. Notification for the agenda and video and, and I don't understand exactly what the conflict of interest, what they, they wanna.
I don't know.
It's like if one of us decides to recuse ourselves from the vote for, or discussion even of some topic that we're doing.
Hmm.
That, it seems like they want a formal statement, uh, on paper, on video and, and filed with the agenda and the, and the minute meetings and all that stuff. To show that we actually stepped away and said, no, we can't be part of this discussion and we can't vote on this either because of this interest I have in this particular. And I don't, I mean, I'm not sure exactly what they want there, but that seems to be the big thing.
That they talked about at that meeting?
The skit, yeah, uh, the conflict of interest documents and they, and they wanted a separate heading under our government.
I find it frustrating just from a visual, what the website looks like, it's gonna be so rare that that line will get used.
Yeah. Yeah.
And it's taking up space on the screen that could be used for something else, you know, which is kind of a, just, I guess that's just my own annoying pet peeve about it, you know, but.
If it. What I'm thinking is if they really want, want it documented that one of us might have a conflict of interest and step away from the table while this discussed and voted. We can do that in an open meeting and it'd be in the minutes, it'd be on the video.
Yes, it should be on the video.
We would say, oh, this item, oh, no, I, I have a business interest with this related to that, so I'm not gonna take part in this discussion, y'all have at it.
I think that takes care of it.
And that, I think that would be open and it doesn't have, I don't think we need a booklet of how many times we were really fair and honest and stepped away from the table. Because we had an interest or a conflict of interest with it, it's just if we have one, it's there and it's announced and it's present and. I don't know if that will make them happy, but it'd make me a lot happier if we just put it, if it was in our minutes and in the video.
Yeah.
If that's the conflict of interest thing that they really, really.
Well, that's, that's to a, uh, I, elected officials may not vote on any matter in section one point three above.
I'll bring that up.
But that's a little confusing, cause one point three doesn't, I, but anyway, for which they are a. But that's a little confusing cause one point three doesn't, I, but anyway, for which they are a, and I think that they, they have a, some personal or pecuniary interest. And, and that's fine, uh, we, we do that, elected officials don't vote, they recuse themselves on, in a matter that. But then on, two A, two I, right below it, they have the wish list, the, or the policy item, of city officials. Now, and I think they mean city staff and employees, uh, because that's not the elective officials. But city officials, so the only ones we have is, uh, Jessica and I, city officials may not be the deciding party. On any matter in section one point three above for which they something have a, a pecuniary or personal interest. We, we are not, we are not, we don't ever, city officials do not ever decide anything for the city of Kingsbury.
Y'all don't get to, y'all don't get to vote on anything, you don't get, get no vote.
We don't, we don't vote, we don't decide.
Yeah.
We just advise you and you do, so, uh, I mean, to me, that's just superfluous, unnecessary. And it's a restatement of, well, it's not, it doesn't even apply, we don't decide things as an official city.
And if it's, if, if it's, if it's in the open meeting and it's said and it's recorded and it's put in the minutes. How much more open can you be?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't, I don't wanna book up here all the things that we almost did, but we didn't because we're good, you know, that's, I don't know.
Now, there's some things that are, are fine, when I looked at them, or at least I thought they're just fine, like, uh, uh, for instance, he sent to you. A city of Kingsbury gift disclosure form sample to be filed by any elected official or city official.
Ah.
Anytime they get a gift, you're supposed to figure that out, uh, which is fine, I mean.
That's what I hear.
Other than my general objection to big government requiring, cause that's when they make you pay for auditors and lawyers and CPAs. Uh, so a lot of this is big government interference with a small city that in my view is not warranted. Uh, and it's more like something like applies to the city of San Antonio. But when I looked at the city of Kingsbury gift disclosure form, I don't have an objection to that in general. And there is a, also, he has a city of Kingsbury vendor disclosure form sample. That's to be filled out by any vendor who sells more than, or does a transaction of more than ten thousand dollars with the city of Kingsbury. So far in our ten year history, I don't think we've ever had a vendor that qualifies for that except for, most recently, Mr. Khan. Dennis Khan, uh, sold us something for more than six, ten thousand dollars. And so that would have been required, uh, to be filled out by Mr. Khan if we had this policy in effect. Or if we were to pass an ordinance like Anthony wants us to do, that says we're going to declare all of this and have forms for it. So I think that's the kind of.
Just why are we putting more bureaucracy, more government, more, more paperwork?
But to me, a vendor. Yeah, a vendor is someone that is in the business of, of providing goods or services.
Yeah.
Yes.
When you're right.
Yeah.
Mr. Khan is not in the business of providing goods or services.
So, so definitely with the, with, when we level the house, that we.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Well, that's, well, that's, you know.
So I'm not sure, eh, isn't.
Well, I can, I can kinda see, because we're a small city, they're also trying to encompass the very large cities and. The very large cities, plenty, plenty of room to move stuff to the side and it gets lost.
Yeah.
And it's not, it's not in your face like this is, uh, because we're small. We don't have that, that's not an issue for us really, uh, but in a large city, yeah, and if part of their. Association, they need, they wanna cover all of, all bases, I know, uh.
Well, it's a question of, uh, compliance and the expense to which we have to go to do it, uh, but I think that's where you have to walk the, uh, walk the line there. Like, for instance, is two A, I is the financial, posting to the website at no cost to the public. Uh, the, and then B, audits, number I, the city conducts a citywide efficiency audit every three years. Conducted by an outside independent firm, uh, however, the requirement is waived if the city has an annual budget. Of two million dollars or less for any year at which an efficiency audit, whether it was, so that's fine, we're exempt from that. And that's what Jessica's comment, that one here is, uh, so this one, we are exempt. But then the next one, two I, the city shall conduct citywide financial audit every year, which is conducted again generally by an, an outside independent firm. They want us, the member action set forth on his sheet is, they want us to conduct a citywide financial audit each, each fiscal year and provide. That, that's something that I think we need to continue, uh, we may need to, we might want to consider doing that. Because that is, I, I mean, we've already talked about it and I don't know that there's any teeth in the statute. But that statute, the local government code does say we're supposed to have an annual audit and we've been over this and it's just. It takes half of our financial, our budget every year to do that and it's just not reasonable. And, but I don't know how you get around the requirement, uh, and, and Anthony can well harp on that, he can continue to harp on that. So, uh, he, you know, you can.
Again, I mean, if we, as, as Frank's pointed out, you don't need a CPA firm.
Right.
Although every person that I've talked to that is just an accountant. Has said like, oh no, I don't wanna touch municipalities, cause that's a whole nother deal.
Right.
I'm like, I don't need, you know, the, I don't need something complicated, I just need, you know, that, yeah, we're not.
I just want you to balance our checkbook.
Right.
But you know, but you know, an audit.
Yeah, just do, uh, a, a general.
Auditors are CPAs who, and the reason it costs so much to audit is because in an audit is a CPA doesn't just look at your checkbook.
Yeah.
And look at your list of vendors and say, is that what they're paying? An auditor actually, uh, like, I used to get unaudited financial statements from my CPA in my law firm. And that's because they don't go audit everything, they just take our word for it, that that's what the books are. An auditor actually goes and looks and says, they're looking for fake vendors.
Yeah. Goes back, so that would, they would look. Right, they would look at that Selco survey and making sure that I didn't cut myself a seven hundred dollar check.
Yeah.
They have, right, and they would call Selco. Selco, do you guys really exist?
That I had the invoice, yeah.
And surely own part of that business?
Yeah.
And is she getting a kickback and they have to go interview all those people to do an audit?
Right, so it's not just verifying.
I don't, I wouldn't want, I mean, I understand, because it's public money, okay? This, but that's my money too then, cause I'm public also.
Right.
It's nice to have a watchdog, but when the watchdog becomes ferocious.
I would. Well, no, I don't want, I don't want, uh, a police investigation, Texas Ranger investigation into this as if it was a crime.
Get out of that association.
If that's the case, then, well, we can cash, cash out our bank and I'm going home, cause I'm not, ah, I just. This, if we said this is what, everybody, where the money came from, that's where it came from, you're welcome to look at it and prove me wrong.
Right.
You know, but I'm not gonna pay you to investigate to prove me wrong or to prove me right. I'm just saying, this is what, this is our, this is our, add, this is our deposits, our debits.
Yeah.
It's all good.
These are the names, balance it out, is it, is it correct? Our, just our budget, annual budget sheet, here's our, this is, look, plus and minus. This is what we have, this is what we spent, this is what we budgeted in between, but that's how it all works out, does it even out? Is there money missing? No, good, that's all.
Yeah.
If you want more than that, you're welcome, we'll have you a copy of, you can dig through it all you want to, but I'm not gonna pay you to do it.
Yeah, but that, and this is part of the reason on the, like, the six hundred and forty eight for the, the, the two year, uh, plan on the website. That's why I'm like, you know, I should probably put an invoice number, so I, that's why I put the invoice number, you know, on there. Uh, just because it just seems like, you know, I could've paid myself six hundred and forty eight dollars and just said, you know, I guess.
You could try.
I could try. I mean, like I've said, there's, there's probably a number out there where it would be worthwhile to, you know, to, uh. To make off with some money, but six hundred and forty eight dollars is not it.
No, that's not it.
You know, so, yeah, but I, you know, for some reason, probably.
And I know on their, uh, on the Government Accountability Association meeting this February, uh, they were talking about Von Army. I don't know if, what their situation is with the TGAA, it sounds like they're kinda like suspended or it's, it, it held and. Set aside for a moment, and it's about the cost of auditing, I believe.
Oh, wow.
Because it said, the auditor they had, uh, was, they were reasonably priced for Von Army. And because they hit that, that went, that border or deadline of like two audit or three audits in a row, they had to go to somebody else. And they said, nobody else comes close, and they said that they couldn't afford, they couldn't afford that, so they stopped.
Right.
Couldn't afford another auditor.
And I think, I think maybe everything held back, they held back on what they're doing with TGAA, I'm not sure.
So they were thinking of joining, but now they're.
But Von Army is. Well, I think either thinking or they had started to, I don't know what the situation is, but had the, the, the cost of the audit was what the issue was.
Yeah.
And Von Army had, they were okay with the auditor they had and they were okay with the price. And they said, now they had to go to someone else and they shopped and they can't find anybody that comes anywhere close and that, what the, the prices they're being asked to pay are exorbitant, they're not gonna do it.
Yeah.
They can't do it.
Yeah.
Just like we couldn't do it.
We couldn't do it.
Only we could until we're out of money, when it'd be about three audits.
Yeah.
You know, and what's the point in that? Nothing, no, no point.
Yeah.
But can you give back to your, uh, constituents, what can you give back to your, nothing because you took it all.
We divided all of it. Divided.
Nothing.
Yeah.
Or they took it all.
That'd be a, that would be a, that would be a awful waste of mon- that's awful, awful, that'd be awful to say, yes, I agree, let's pay that.
And it's basically assuming that everybody out there in a small or a big city is out to create fake vendors. And to defraud, uh, the taxpayer with money. And I, I'm offended if somebody thinks that about the city of Kingsbury.
Yeah.
When we put every check on the website and out here in a public meeting, it's, it's ridiculous. But, you know, I, I do think that as far as the, the government requirements that doing an audit, we might oughta. And, and I might've made light of it when you mentioned it earlier, but I shouldn't have. And, uh, and I think we should follow up and consider trying to do like you suggested Frank, which is. Uh, let's just go find a retired bank president or somebody that would agree for a reasonable price to do that kind of an audit. And they know how to do it, is there, uh, and try to find somebody that is reasonably.
Very reasonable.
And, but that's what I try, I've contacted, I don't know how many people at this point.
Yes. There aren't.
No, they're just, it scares them.
Yeah, well, right now, right now, they're in tax season, okay.
If, if they're not a professional, if they're not a professional accountant, not an auditor, just an accountant.
Auditor. Okay.
Accountant.
If they're not a professional accountant, it scares them to, I've, I've, I've contacted several people. I'm like, hey, you know.
Some initials you have to have behind your name to do.
Yeah, and, and they're like, oh, I, that makes me nervous, I don't think I could, and then I start counting accountants. And they're like, oh no, municipal, the sign off and cer- certification of your results and blah, 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 I'm like, we really don't need them. But they're, they're about the rules and so they don't wanna do it because of that.
Yes.
And in, in beginning, I contacted an accounting firm that, they're the ones that gave me that number of, like, I don't know.
Well, the fire department.
It was like six grand or something for that.
The fire department got an audit, uh.
I bet, you know, I bet they did.
And, uh, I'm sure we could find out who did it.
But they, they have a lot more in the way of.
Yeah, can you find out?
Yeah, I'll find out.
Yeah.
And I'm, but it's, right now it's tax season, they're all snowed under, but as soon as it's over, I'm gonna, I happen to know an individual CPA that is.
They're all snowed under, yeah.
That is, that's her, she's the business, so it's small, I'm gonna ask her.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah.
Would you balance the check, could you, could you balance, you know, an account for me?
Yeah.
And just plus and minus, I just, here, give her all, it's city of Kingsbury, well, I said, no, it's from me, personal, I wanna know if it's right or not.
Yeah.
And it's, yeah, how much would you charge me to do this?
I mean, I, I, well, let's keep asking, we'll hit the right person at some point.
I just see. Yeah, this is not, this is not a five thousand dollar job, y'all, so.
No, it's not.
And I still, I've looked, I looked in the local code for what's required for the audit.
And we're not gonna pay five thousand dollars of our.
And I thought I had it nailed down, now I'm not even sure what I read, but now I'm thinking instead of, it can't be a, uh, an elected official or an employee of the city. Now I think it, now I think it can be an employee of the city.
Well, it's supposed to be, I think it says independent.
I don't, like I said, on the, the code, I don't think it does.
Okay.
But I, I don't think, I didn't, I didn't, it's on my computer.
I think, I think also, that's a great idea, let's see.
But I was thinking, this is not what I thought it was, and I was sure I was right, but I'm not, I don't, but maybe I'm not right now, but.
You're right.
You know, and they may have a different, I mean, they're not elected officials, they're not municipality, they're not a government, so it may be a little bit, they could probably have the treasurer, you know.
I'm sure that. Reading some of the stuff and finding associated with that, searching for stuff like that.
Well, that's what they were doing a few years ago, I think they had some.
I think there's agencies and departments and divisions of the government, they think, oh no, it has to be this way, we require that.
Okay. Okay.
Well. This is high quality.
Why do you require that? Because that's what's required, and I said, well, if I'm going by the legislation, no. By the, the local government code, no, by your rules, yes, but, no, we don't, no, it's, this, this is, this is what the law is.
You don't answer to your rules.
And I don't wanna care what your regulations are, this is the law, but I'm not a lawyer, so I'm just a hack that runs a computer now and then.
I think you, you're more than that and you're qualified to answer that question, and I think you're right, color it. And I think we, we, uh, comply and that, uh, almost every, uh, I is dotted and almost every T is crossed.
Thanks.
There might be some interpretation, but I think your interpretation is correct and I think that's why we're in compliance. And I don't think, uh, they should, uh, I mean, we wanna be transparent and this is all fine and good. But they should not make you go to where you have to get rid of a country lawyer and go hire a big firm out of Austin. Specializes in civic, uh, municipal auditing, uh, you, I mean, that, if they drive you that far, that's.
You shouldn't have to spend, the city shouldn't have to spend more than one tenth of one percent of their entire city budget to have it be an, to be audited, to have an audit.
Right.
It should, it shouldn't be.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, but, uh, TGAA, they seem to be kind of on board with just our bank statement, like that being open and honest and above board and clear. And transparent, they seem to be okay with that for the most part. If we tack it on, like you do, you tack it on to our agenda line, agenda meeting minutes, video and bank statement or whatever it's called.
Yeah, uh, uh, monthly check report.
Yeah, check report. Which, yeah, basically, yeah, they seemed okay with that.
That's good. Um, before we leave this TGAA topic, or I, one thing I wanted to mention is that I. I was looking over like, and I, I, I don't know, to bring it up here, I should've probably brought a copy or something. But I, I was looking at the agreement that we signed in joining it and, um. If we were to decide that we wanted out of it, um, it looked really hard to get out of it, basically.
Yeah.
I was like, whoa, like, uh, it was, um, something about, uh. I think like maybe sending out a letter to the, the, all of the residents saying that we're pulling out and, and why. And then you still have to wait like two years or something and you're supposed to be paying the dues for it, well, you don't, you're just waiting.
No, our dues.
Oh, we have zero dues.
Well, he mentioned that there will be some kinda dues next year that we.
Well, we, we're not, well, I mean, this is only a one year contract, right?
Number one reason to be out and your two year thing ain't gonna go.
No, no. No, wait till next year.
I don't know, I think he was saying like five hundred bucks a year or something like that.
I was. Listen, that's their minimum started, that's, that was their minimum startup and.
They don't give us anything, they just need to do more work.
But no, reading, reading, I guess, they're.
At least the other one gives us insurance.
Their, their transparency declo- disclosures and their Accountability Association. Their, their transparency declo- disclosures and their Accountability Association stuff that they, you know, and then watching their meeting minutes, and it's like, you know, why did we sign on to this? Because it was a good idea, it really is. And if it's an issue for us, then it must be a terrible headache to a large city. And I'm sure the large cities are adamantly not gonna wanna get involved in this. They'd rather continue with, doing what they're doing, and I think this probably is a lot better than the way we've been doing, the way they've been doing things. And it helps us also not get that way, uh, as honest and straightforward as we think we are. It's still, you know, we might, I don't wanna go down the road, we might just a little bit, but, and that kinda helps keep us back mainstream where we wanna, where we wanna be.
Mm-hmm.
We wanna be open and honest and transparent with what we're doing.
Right.
Uh, and I, I still think it's a good idea, I would, I would do it again.
I don't think paying the dues though is good.
Well, they're, they can, you know what, it's like, it's like, we're gonna.
The compound.
It's, I wanna say, I'm gonna bring it up.
Why don't we just keep up the filming of it and not pay dues?
We're gonna, we're gonna, it's, it's just negotiating, yes, it's, we're just, we're just like negotiating. We talk about raising prices, we talk about, we do talk about a bad lower on property tax here every once in a while, don't we? Well, I just heard a rumor, and everybody's gonna get a lot upset, but no, we don't. But, you know, we might have to someday, we might have to someday, but not with my vote.
Mm-hmm.
On my vote?
I know, but it's like, you talk about the plans for the future, they have plans for the future. They're, they're lowering their prices, they've already adjusted their prices down for the larger cities, 'cause we had a city that was owing like on their pay scr- structure of like fifty-two thousand dollars annually, and they're looking at, just go ahead and make twenty-five thousand max for like these really large cities. But we'll see how it goes, like I said, I still think it's on, it's on the right track. I like, I like it the right, I like the track it's on, I don't think there's anything wrong with it.
Thank you.
Um, I have a couple of notes on here of things that I haven't brought up with y'all that, um, they asked for, um, one is, um, they want, um, uh, they want us to have something, uh, an ordinance or, or, okay, there's a statement they want written in some sort of official document that says, uh, that we will not use confidant- confidential information to harm the city or for personal gain. Um, and, which, I mean, obviously, that's not anyone's intention to do that,
No.
but they do want it, uh, in print with the, like on an ordinance, or he said, if we had a
I don't exactly understand what that means.
Code of Ethics ordinance, then it could be part of that or something, but I don't know that, I don't think that we have a code of, I, I don't know. Maybe that, there's something like that back in the.
I don't, I don't know, we, we, if we made an ordinance, we couldn't enforce it.
I think it's all, this is number eleven.
If someone wants to use confidential information, then all of a sudden it's not confidential anymore, is it? You know, that's the way things go, I don't.
If it's a public meeting, okay.
Uh, we don't have too many secrets, so, and if any other city has too many secrets, they don't want them to get out, well, you know what? Don't have secrets, let it out now.
Okay, so just to clarify, are, we, we are in a one-year contract with these people, right? Doesn't automatically renew for the rest of our eternity?
Uh, I thought that it was a non-doing thing.
They have, they have interlocal agreements with cities to. Interlocal, I wrote, I, I, ILA, ILA, what is ILA, ILA, oh, interlocal agreement of it. Inter, interlocal agreement, cap membership at twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, compliance process. Uh, see, they're dealing with cities, municipalities, independent school districts and county governments, uh, that's what they're trying to get into this association, uh, cities like ideas of, okay, here's one of the issues, was the cities that they had approached liked the ideas of the Texas governmental soc- Texas government.
Accountability.
Accountability Association.
That's your word, sir.
Uh, I know, they're, they, they like the ideas of what this association represents, what it's offering. They're enthusiastic, but there's no follow-through. When, when they get down, come back around to it, uh, it just kinda fades away, it just kinda goes, it's not, it's not.
The city does, the cities go.
Yeah, the city just loses interest, or they just, they don't ever.
Of course they do, 'cause this is already difficult for us, and it's, it's unrealistic.
Well, they, they're, they liken, but like I said, they, they're enthusiastic at the beginning with the ideas, the base, the basic ideas of what this is about. And just like I still am, um, I think it's a good positive thing.
Of course, the, the basic idea, but they're making it a lot more paperwork.
Well, they're, just because they're from, I'm assuming they're used to working with big government organizations, which it is, the standard, the, the status quo, the way we've always done things can't continue, it has to, you can't do it. Otherwise you end up right back where you started. But anyways, um, so they're looking at maybe petitions and referendums on the upcoming ballots to get maybe, uh, citizen enthusiasm for this, to implement it in their local governments. Don't know, we'll see how that goes.
Well, I remember when we first agreed to do this, they, they took a picture of us over by the flag and they were like, we're gonna send around this pamphlet to everyone in the neighborhood
A letter and the.
and make it, make you sound cool or whatever, and it's like, I think actually, this is a side comment, but I think it might be nice for us to take a picture like what they took that day, like, I was kinda like, oh, I'm glad someone is taking a picture like that because that could probably be useful in the website and various places that I just need an image of this group of people here, you know?
Anyway.
But, uh, anyway, uh, I don't know.
That's their relationship to it, so.
Yeah, they did, they did offer to send a letter of, of introduction that we could publicize and send out to all the citizens of what this was and why it was good.
Yeah.
And, uh, still waiting on that. Uh, and it mattered, been, while we're at that, my mind came back to full circle, dues, we're not paying the five hundred, we're paying nothing.
Yes, but.
Uh, because we're very low, but how would y'all feel about if we paid fifty dollars a year, a hundred dollars a year, just to belong?
Who would?
What, yeah, what, I'm, I'm kind of baffled about like what we're getting, they're not fighting for us.
But they said.
I was saying.
But that's only what they said.
No, I know, but, but I'm, I'm saying, we, we had a proclamation, Washington's birthday, which I think is good. But that cost us no money. Well, it cost us a little bit of time and paper, but, you know, it's, it's a very small amount.
Yeah.
But this, five bucks a year, is that too much? Some kind of a, I want some, I would like to say we'd be willing to put some kind of.
I would need to negotiate about all these different terms that are making us.
Well, it's all, it's always negotiable, everything is negotiable, they're still, they're still writing this as they go.
Okay, but we are midway, I mean, yeah.
I feel, I feel awkward to tell them, oh no, we, we're not gonna do that, and
Without a reason.
we don't have any, we don't have any, we don't even have a nickel into this, you know, and that's, uh, it's like, I don't know. We support our fire department, we're not gonna, we don't wanna pay any money for it, okay?
We do pay money for our fire department.
I know, we don't, but we don't want to.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Ooh, Frank, that's a road you're walking down tonight.
No, no, if, if you think something is good, then, uh, why not support it? And I, and I, I'm not saying that we're rolling, you know, throwing money at them.
Cool, I think some of their things are good, and I think some of their things are superfluous, and a lot more work for a small volunteer city to deal with.
Uh-huh.
And I think it's impractical, and I'm beginning to wonder, you know, uh, now we're roped into this thing for life, I mean, what?
No, we're not, no, we're not.
I was disturbed by the, how difficult it is to get out.
You know what, we tend to tell them, we're not gonna be part of this anymore, we're done, what are they gonna do?
And, and I'm, I'm not suggesting that we get out of it, but just on your comment, and we need to go back and look at it, I haven't looked at that agreement since, like, we did it two years ago, or, or a year and a half. But there is a statute in Texas that says, uh, in the Business and Commerce Code, it says, if you enter into a contract that says you cannot terminate that contract, then that provision is void.
Yeah, that's true.
And, so everyone has a right to terminate a contract in Texas, if we ever have to, but that's just in your back pocket.
Yeah.
We're not, I'm not suggesting that, so, uh, yes, they, I do remember they wanted, they wanted everybody to know that we came into this, and they did say that if, you know, if you're gonna pull out of it, you have to write a letter to all of them. Well, we could easily do that, comply with that, and I'm saying, we just told, we just told everybody on, on the, on the Facebook,
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, they haven't let us, they haven't let anybody know anyway.
Yeah.
Uh, an open meeting that we're going to terminate it, now we've told everybody, here's your letter.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, but I think that, uh, as long as we're in it, I mean, this is a relationship.
Yeah.
Uh, and, 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 uh, so long as the commission feels that it's, um, a, uh, a, a good existing relationship and we wanna continue it, then I think we need to just go on, and you have your meetings with them, uh, Jessica. And we try to find out where we have questions, and we don't understand what their point is, ask them, tell us what you want, let's just be clear about it.
But you're also pretty clear about what we have problems with, right, it's the cost of the audits. Um, and then just this impractical paperwork to double state what we already do, that just seems like this is really geared towards a much bigger city. They already have, uh, exceptions for cities who are two million budgets and up, so let's have a few more. I mean, if you want us to be your founding city of your operation, cool, I mean, I love, here we are, hi, it's great. It's great, also, people don't come down here, so at least they get to watch us on television, you know, so it's fantastic.
Yeah. But, but just, just.
City at work.
Just, just a little bit, 'cause this, 'cause you threw that in, the audit, the city audit, you know, that's not theirs, that's, that's state.
Both.
No, but the way that the amount that they want us to audit is.
Okay.
The efficiency audit.
The efficiency audit, we're, we're, we're exempt from that, efficiency, two million dollar budget is where you have to do an efficiency audit.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, there was though, on this audit thing that they're asking for, that we're not exempt from, uh, there was the Q and A session with city residents was, uh, um, this was
We did.
Um, when the.
Something that was disturbing, it, well, this got mentioned, I don't know.
The audit.
Oh, the.
I, I knew that this was mentioned at the last meeting, but, okay, so the, the draft audit report and the final audit report shall be posted to the city's website, and the lead partner on the audit shall be made available for a Q and A session with city residents
Okay.
Oh, oh.
and taxpayers, within sixty days of the final audit report's completion, no firm shall perform such audit for more than three years in succession, and no more than six times in ten years.
Okay.
So I feel like when this Q and A thing came up last month, Sam, you were like, now, now you see it going from fifteen grand to thirty grand, or something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I said.
I said, your audit, uh, bill just went from fifteen thousand to thirty thousand. When you put that in there, that the, the, the partner in charge of the auditing team has to come down here and meet with all of our constituents, yes ma'am, it's unbounded what that expense would be.
Yeah.
So I think that's unrealistic of, on their part.
Yeah.
And I think if we push back or just negotiate, like Frank says, we're just negotiating, we can't do that, guys, you know?
Yeah.
This is, we just can't do that.
Yeah, but if, if we, if we, if we had an auditor that was, the price was in our price range to audit our city account, city books, uh, have them available, I'd ask, you know, I said, if we, if, if we have, uh,
But there are probably sounds.
If there, if there was an uprising of people that really want to have, ask questions about it, uh, could we direct them to you directly? Or if there's a bu- a bunch, we'll have one meeting, citywide, she'll be here, or the, the CPA will be here to answer your questions, if you have a question. But ask us first, you know?
Amen.
I mean, it's not.
Best point out of the whole.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we, we're paying for the audit, we don't, we don't want you, you know, I want you to come in and verify everything that you already know.
So I think, I think.
Put it in paper, there it is, uh, that's ridiculous.
I think when you meet with, with the representative, the TG, I mean, this is, we, we have a real problem with this audit. I mean, more than just, we have a problem paying, you know, for something like that, and something that could easily escalate. But we have a problem, you know, finding.
Yeah, it's, uh.
I'll, 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 I'll see if I can find it, we did the one.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate it.
Being above board with the, the taxpayers' money.
Yeah, audits for a very small city are, you know, and again, when I've talked to other, you know, people in, in, you know,
Even large cities.
officials in other very small cities, they don't do an audit, it's too much.
But it, yeah, it, it, it's, it's not a judicial use of the public's funds.
It's too much. We're not the only one. Right, we're not the only ones.
We don't have, we don't accept tax dollars so we can spend it to justify how we spend our tax dollars.
Yeah. Yeah, spend it to justify.
Oh.
Yeah, okay.
That's, that makes no sense.
Yeah. All right, have we beat that horse?
Yeah.
Um, I guess just, um, okay, just one more point on this list that I think is not a big deal at all.
One more.
Uh, uh, there's a line about disclosing lobbying to the state or federal government, like if, if y'all wanted to go to the State House and say, I'm here speaking for Kingsbury, and I think that this law should, should or shouldn't pass, or whatever, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Um, they just want, basically, I said, is this something that they, like, you're supposed to let the public know that you went and spoke for Kingsbury in Kingsbury's name, and I asked, is that something that they could just put on the discussion board?
That's really good.
Like, hey, you know, uh, I, Allison, went to the State House with Shirley, and we talked about this, you know?
Oh, I'm very sorry, our commissioner.
Uh, I think, I don't see any problem with that, and that's easy to do.
Yeah.
Okay.
And they said that, he said that that would take care of that one.
Cool. Yeah, 'cause I think that's important, that people should know what we're doing, especially for the mill, yeah.
And if they were up there lobbying, it needs, it needs, I would wanna make it clear whether I'm lobbying for Kingsbury or lobbying for myself.
Yes, absolutely.
I'm a citizen for Texas, uh, or I'm a commissioner of Kingsbury, the city of Kings, I'm, I'm representing Kings, the city of Kingsbury, I'm representing me.
It's my right to be. Yep.
Yeah, so I didn't think y'all would have a problem with that, and, um, I just wanted, you didn't know that if that ever comes up, I, I've said this to you.
Yeah. Thank you, I trust you, I trust you very, very, very much.
Thank you. All right.
And you won't, you're not, can't be fired.
So, we're moving on to item number eight, right? Discuss and consider update, creating a city structure and elections page on the city website.
Yeah, it's kinda done.
Yeah, I think it's kinda done.
It looked, looked, looked pretty nice.
Uh, yeah, I, I emailed you, I know Frank saw, and I sent Shirley a couple pictures of it while I was in the middle of.
Let's see, can you pull it up?
Um, yeah, it's under the government tab on the website.
While y'all are looking for it.
I was just looking, suddenly, tonight, I have like the two hundred and thirty-eight.
Any. Any email I get from Jessica to everybody or wherever, I'm always gonna reply something, so that you know I read it, okay? So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Yeah, that is nice.
Well, that, well, this is where I added the term expires, but Jessica actually has a, a structure.
Commissioner's.
Government, elections and city structure.
Elections, yes.
Oh, like how she did it, next election, so here's.
Nice, nice.
Ah, beautiful.
We all report to the Kingsbury residents, so Commissioner Mark Chan, Mayor Commissioner, and then city attorney, city attorney, city clerk, and vote Kingsbury.
Nice.
Yes, so, yeah, I, I, I like what you did there, give it a lot of information, and, yeah.
Cool.
I just have one question.
What's that?
Is that all you, or is that AI?
Uh, I mean, uh, it's not AI, um, I pulled.
Okay, that don't care.
I pulled some language from Wiki, the Wikipedia page about Kingsbury, and then I pulled some, I, I pulled some.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
You researched, you researched.
And I did all that before there was AI.
She did what AI does.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah, I went to the New Berlin website, uh, and looked at their elections page, and, and that kind of
Yeah, better.
took me on a journey of looking at different legislation about, uh, elections, and what should be there.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's absolutely sharp, very, very nice.
Yeah, I like it, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so check that on, uh, her.
Yay.
It's done and looks fabulous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm, oh, oh, anything else?
Thank you, no.
I, I was gonna move on.
Yes, yes.
Yes, that's good.
Item number nine, discuss and consider clerical update, this is Jessica regarding wifi and streaming services. Right, so, um, right now, we are simultaneously streaming to Facebook and YouTube, so that's pretty cool.
Yes.
Um. And what's amazing is that, I mean, Jessica and I, when we were here last month, we're sitting side by side. And what's amazing is that, I mean, Jessica and I, when we were here last month, we're sitting side by side and I'm getting forty-five megabits per second and she's getting two fifty, and now, tonight, and so it's just a laptop thing, or, you know, how, how much my memory or my CPU is pinged out.
But now.
But tonight I'm getting two hundred and, two hundred and fifty, essentially, I've never seen it like that.
Well, that's interesting when this computer's working really hard right now, but, uh, it, I don't know, I don't know how it remembers.
Well, for the long, you got going through it.
Yeah, it's, it's, I've never seen that before on mine, so, yeah, that's, this is the first time I've actually been able to utilize the, this, this kinda speed before.
The service.
Cool, yeah, um, yes, and, um, oh, I, I called David the other day to check, uh, touch base about, like, the, the cost of the internet, um, but I I still didn't get any, get any, um, I think that he was saying that they were supposed to talk about that at their's, their business meeting, but then there was too much other stuff and they didn't get around to it, so I still don't have a number for that, um.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and I, I also, on that subject, uh, asked him if there was anything that, about the, the lease, um, that we should talk about or or anything, and, um, he said, quote, no news is good nu- news, was one thing that was said. And I sorta just kinda gave him an update of what, what was said at the meeting last month about, you know, that maybe we should just stick to the one meeting a month in this location, and, uh, if we need to do any special meetings, we should find somewhere else to do it, basically.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and he was like, well, y'all are working on getting out of here, right, and I was like, yes, we are.
Yeah.
So, uh, so, uh, I think there's, um, nothing much to report there, but I, but I did check.
Cool.
Yay.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Um, yeah, I don't really know if there's anything else, um, I did add those video links to the schedule and agendas page, um. Yeah, maybe that's all.
There's a lot, there's a lot.
Yeah, I've been busy this month with some city stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, item number ten, discuss and consider interlocal agreement on subdivision regulation update. And this has my name on it and I haven't done anything extra this month on that, so I don't have any particular updates on that, I don't know if anybody else does.
I do not.
Okay, um, I'm gonna leave it on the agenda, but, yeah, I don't have any, anything extra on that this month. Um, item number eleven, discuss and consider Kingsbury City Commission.
Why does that look on your face?
This is kinda like a ditto, leave it on the agenda, but I haven't done anything in that regard.
Well, it's my intention to, and then, you know.
Well, I have a lot of intentions.
I know, we, we, we covered a whole lot of other bases this, this evening, so.
Yes, we did.
A lot of business.
I'm sorry, I interrupted you, y'all are talking about the mission and vision now.
But.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, City of Kingsbury, and then, item number eleven, discuss and consider City, Kingsbury City Commission vision and mission, mission and vision statement.
Yeah, I I I'll, I'll, I'll resurrect that, I'll have it on my calendar somewhere, good.
Okay.
I have one thing to say about that, um, you know, last month, um, again, it was at the end of the agenda, it was like past nine and I was like, ugh, but, uh, you said something about that there had been a survey written, but nothing
Yeah.
and, uh, you hoped that I remembered what you, and at the time I, I was just, didn't really, but, these are the, so I had made that webpage
Right.
um, about the, the strategic planning workshop that we had, and I had written some, what I call thinker questions.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And put it on that, uh, webpage, and I left up that event webpage for a good while
That's easy.
Thinker.
because it had a lot of information on it, but then eventually I just felt weird about there being an event page up that, for an event that had happened a long time ago.
Mm-hmm.
No.
And so, I turned, like, I turned it off, you know, like, it still exists, but it was, uh, you can't see it. Uh, and, um, and I had wondered if I should revamp that page so that it's not connected to a specific event or if we even needed that information out in that way anymore, um, anyway, um, I guess I just thought I would bring these questions for y'all so that you could look at them again and see if it helps with thinking about how to move forward on these things.
I can use this verbatim, right?
This is great, yeah.
I mean, you can do whatever you want with it.
Use it, yeah, thank you. Uh, yeah.
Keeping government small, let's remind our people that, uh, we do, that we need to remember that.
Yes, yeah, raise the focus.
Well, and you know, last, last month, someone had brought up about Santa Clara, there, you know, there's some kind of effort going on to to dissolve Santa Clara, but when you're looking, what it is, 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 you know, they have a problem with the roads and stuff, but they have a property tax. So they're expecting services, goods, they're expecting services and maintenance, you know, for their property tax.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's, and they, there are some, uh, or at least one person, you know, spearheading that, that thinks that they're not getting what, uh, what they should be, you know, for their property tax. So, that, it's not like they're just, oh, let's, we don't need it anymore, let's get out of it, it's because of their, their property tax, which we don't, which we don't have. So we're able to, um, uh, provide, you know, limited, uh, street maintenance and, you know, what we need to for our meager uh, sales tax, and if people want, uh, more than that, then we, we would have to think about.
Yeah.
You know, if that's something we wouldn't, we would want to, uh, to, uh, give to the, you know, residents, then, yeah, you would have to start thinking about, about property tax, and that's where they've gotten into, uh, hot water, n- not hot water, but there's one, at least one disgruntled citizen regarding that, but that's where, that's where it's coming from, it's coming from having a property tax and feeling like they don't get what they should be getting from, from that, so.
It's all, they, they want.
Um, I didn't have time to look into it last time, so, until af- till afterwards, till that evening, so.
We don't have.
Yeah.
Well, we just have a grant-getting mayor. Brings in the.
One before you turn, and make that up, if that's where you're looking, but not, if not, I wanna go back to.
I'm about to turn. Yes, yes.
Uh, question for Jessica, cause I didn't see, the microphone?
Right, that was something I wanted to mention. Yeah, we talked about that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, yeah, me and Shirley had a little chat about the microphone, uh, right before the meeting, you know, uh, but, um, uh, and I, I put something in that email about, um, options for that, um, I'm thinking, I, I sent y'all a link for a twenty-five dollar microphone, um, that just would connect to the computer and sit out here, and, uh, I'm thinking just that one.
Yeah, certainly can.
Yeah.
There was a, I sent y'all a, a link for like a seventy dollar thing, and it, it, it can do U- USB or Bluetooth and, I mean, I think, it seemed like most people were kinda using it more for, for speakerphone type thing, and, uh,
Speaker.
I don't know, for a second I was like, ah, this is probably, cause it, it said it had four AI microphones in it, and I was like, well, I don't know what that means, but maybe it's good.
So they're alive? They're living computers, it's gonna take over the world?
The only thing I liked with that one was that you could, uh, change, daisy chain, you know, units.
Right, yeah.
With US, with the USB cord, and I was like, I really don't wanna see a cord running across to that table or to that.
Yeah, there's, I saw that, the mirror, daisy, yeah. Right, we don't need a daisy chain.
But, for twenty-five dollars, if it sat there and worked for us and at least that rode.
Worked and pick up the audio.
Yeah, it was audible, and the little test that one guy did, it looked, it sounded pretty good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, were you watching the guy that, uh?
The video, he sat in his com- and he walked around his room.
And then he went to like another floor in the house?
Went to another, yeah.
Yeah, and you could still kinda make it out all right, and then there was another person who had a, a test video that was like,
Yeah, yeah.
they started by like, sort of showing you how their laptop mic sounded, and they were like, this is when I'm s- right next to it.
Yeah.
This is when I'm ten feet away, and then they turned on the, this twenty-five dollar mic and, and, I mean, just the audio output was much louder.
Yeah.
For one thing, and then, which would be good, cause this thing is really quiet.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and then, and yeah, it was a, a real improvement, so.
But for twenty-five dollars.
Do you have the port capacity on the city laptop to handle another input?
Well, I have an old gadget.
Do you have a docking station of some sort, like?
That, um. Yeah, I have a, um, like a USB, you know, you may worry your speed, you go on your.
Online.
Yes, yeah.
Yay.
Yeah.
Yes. If it's USB A, yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so that should be fine, I, I expected it'll be easy to use.
Okay.
Twenty-five dollars, yes.
It's worth trying, I think, for twenty-five bucks.
All right, I'll order that.
Yay.
I might order a new binder and a new calendar.
Oh.
You just bought you a microphone.
Then is there no end?
Just you give them an inch and I swear. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, and, oh, one last thing, I, uh, we had talked about the, uh, special event, uh, permit form. And I made, I scanned it, there you go, good, and you know, we can actually make a form on the, on the website.
Yeah, uh. Well, so, I actually, I found that I did have an editable copy of it, and I, uh, is this where I?
Uh-huh.
So, were we wanting to add anything other than?
There was one thing that we wanted to add, and I'll have to go back and see if I can find that, because there was one thing that we wanted to add, and I can't remember what it was.
I think that it was to say where, what portion of the road you wanna close.
Oh, okay, yeah, maybe that was it, instead of.
And I added it to this form, but I couldn't remember if there was anything else that was supposed to get added. I just wrote a, I just put in a line that says, portion of road to be closed.
Yeah.
Could you email, email me a copy and I'd at least look at it, and then you go, uh, I guess that's fine.
That's good. Yeah.
Yeah.
And so, do you think it should be something to print out, or do you think it's something we should put in form, form, on the, on a webpage?
Mark, I'll think of something.
You know, where they can fill it out online and submit it?
I mean, I think we could do both things, right?
How do they do it now?
Um, the, right now, they pick up a form at the store.
Yeah, um, I mean.
And they bring it back to the store, and they get to you?
Uh-huh. I'm sure you could stick it on the website, yeah, just both, right?
Or bring it here. Yeah.
I like both.
Okay.
Yeah.
I know, you totally did it to.
It's a Wix website, I think you can push a button and get to a form.
Yeah, yeah, you just have to create the form, that's not a deal.
Oh, so, like where you can fill it out online, is that, yeah, oh, okay.
We'll have to.
Online, yeah. That's possible.
Cool, uh, I guess I'll send, should I, I'll just send this form to all y'all, I mean.
Is that both forms, one, you said you altered that one already, or you added something?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just sort, added one line.
Okay, it's, it'll be on this then.
Yeah, I'm glad you remembered what that was, right, at this point, adjourned.
Okay.
Yay.
Right.
Haha, we did it.
Just saying, get hammered.